Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start the committee of the whole meeting if the board members can make sure you guys have microphones on. Okay, it's 7:04 PM on Monday, April 14th, 2025. I'd like to call to order the Village of Brookfield Committee of the whole meeting. Bridget, can we have a roll call for the committee?
Trustee Ketchmark?
Here.
Trustee Kotay?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Neematsu?
Here.
Trustee Gahuli?
Here.
Trustee Kalusek?
Here.
And President Garbi?
Here. Thank you. We have three items under regular business to discuss. The first is a discussion on site preparation and possible demolition at 3717 to 3723 Grand Boulevard. These are two properties that were recently acquired by a village as part of an ongoing strategic redevelopment program. Staff has a recommendation about possible next steps. We, Libby gave us, as usual, a very detailed memo, but Libby, can you maybe summarize for the audience, maybe more than the board, what the recommendation is and the basis of the recommendation?
Certainly. So now that the property has been acquired, we're in the process, one of the tenants is going to be vacating by the end of May, and the goal now is to get the site prepared for future development. So as part of that, it's clearing it and having it what's called shovel-ready, removing any risk of having vacant or underutilized buildings stay there until we have the full development. So we are requesting to obtain some quotes from contractors on price for demolishing the site. And then earlier today, I also had a meeting with Hancock. We're also requesting to install the services before the final paving is done in June. And Dan is here if you have any individual questions on that, because that's one additional variable to that since we're having the streetscape being done right now.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, did you have more?
That's it.
Okay. I know everyone's familiar with the sites, and some people may be surprised or disappointed to learn that the, you know, the recommendation is to demolish the buildings. As much as everyone has been in love with that building and the theater, if you have not been inside, and I think some people were able to see some of the pictures that we have seen, the way it's structured and what it's like inside. Staff's recommendation, and I believe it has a good basis, is that we demolish the properties, both properties, and get them ready for the development. We did put out requests for proposals, and that's active and going on, and we're soliciting more proposals. But I'll open it up to the board for discussion at this point.
I do have a quick question. So if I remember correctly, that site had car lifts in it, correct? So were they, do we know what powered the car lift? Was it something that we have to worry about environmental protection-wise?
We're going to have the environmental Phase One done, and then do the Phase Two if needed. So we don't have that information right now.
Okay.
In addition, I didn't mention this either, there is, there are two trees that would need to be removed as well.
And Trustee Kotay, I don't, I mean, there were cars stored in there, but I know Trustee Ketchmark's very familiar with them.
Yeah, they weren't, it wasn't like a auto garage where they're going into the ground. I think they were above, probably above the ground.
So it could be like the mobile lifts like we have at DPW.
Yeah.
I hope so, that would be good.
What does the installation of the utilities mean?
I'll let Dan speak to that.
Dan O'Malley from Hancock Engineering, our village engineers, is approaching now, and we'll, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, so we did meet with Libby earlier just to discuss and make sure that the utilities aren't going to be an issue for the new development where, you know, we finish our project, pave Grand, and then have to go and rip it out to put in a new sanitary and a new water service. So we're gonna reach out to the underground contractor that's doing Grand Boulevard and see if they will give us a price to stub out a new sanitary service up to the right-of-way and then a new water service. So that then, when a developer gets under contract, they can just connect right at the right-of-way rather than cutting out the pavement.
So does the size of that vary with what the potential project would be? I mean, what are we geared for?
Yeah, it's a good question. The sanitary service, probably not, you know, it will talk with Libby and get a better idea of what we're looking at. In terms of developers, the water service will vary a little bit. We'll have to talk with BNF and, you know, determine if it's better to potentially upsize a little bit in preparation for a potential development, or, you know, whatever the best strategy is there, but.
That doesn't play into the size of the mains that are over there?
Nope. The main will remain, probably won't be disturbed at all, and they'll do a pressure tap into the main and stub it out to the right-of-way, so it can be connected on with the development.
Okay.
So, and the goal would be to get that done. Final paving, the initial paving will be in June, the final paving will be probably early August, so as long as we can get it done before that, then it shouldn't affect anything with the Grand Boulevard. So, and we'll coordinate the demo. I think Libby's already setting up a meeting with the demo contractor on site so that we can kind of feel out what they would need, and if they can do everything from the alley, or if they need access on Grand Boulevard, how can we coordinate it so that, you know, businesses aren't being affected and traffic, and just making sure all the work that's going on can happen cohesively, so.
So the plan is for one service, one set of service lines, not as if this will be one single development going forward?
I think currently we're looking at doing two, at least for sanitary, just in case, because it's not a foregone conclusion that will be one development. So we'd rather go on the safer side and stub out two, and, you know, if it doesn't get connected, at least you're, you know, a little bit safer rather than risking tearing up the pavement.
Okay, thanks.
Libby, has there been any prospective, you know, development ideas that have come forward so far?
Yeah, we've had several, I've had several inquiries, about eight to 10 inquiries. We've had three serious ones with one getting ready to send in RFP information. We actually did tour the site and provided some information to that developer.
But in light of those?
May 30th is the deadline, which can be extended if the board would like to extend it.
But do we want to see, I mean, if there is something that we would like amongst that, do we want to see how that fits into the service we're putting in for that?
Yeah, this actually originated from that particular developer because it was asking about the site preparation. So I did, I did convey to Dan roughly what that developer was looking at, which was to bring density and some units, about up to 40 units with three commercial on the bottom, so that we're kind of starting with that starting point.
I have two possibly unpopular questions.
Sure.
One is, because we aren't sure what the development is going to be, if it's gonna be one or two, I'm wondering if you can keep the trees until you know what it's going to be.
I agree with that.
If nothing happens there for a year or so, it still is providing shade and a nice space for a little bit longer, and that could happen at a separate time, just a thought. And second, because people were very excited about the brick and the facade, and both of those items are brick, curious if you would consider looking at or have looked at a deconstruction company that does take it all apart, and then you can reuse those bricks for a future, either it goes back to like the rebuilding exchange or Blue Earth Deconstruction, where they can use those pieces in the future, or at least it's kind of, since we own it, we can kind of take it apart sustainably instead of going all in the landfill. I don't know what those quotes would be different from, I'm sure they'd be a little bit more, but just curious if that's something to maybe consider for this particular site.
I'm sure we have any residents who would like to have a brick.
I do.
It's a good idea.
And we did discuss with the developer, no, the contractor once he was out there, and the developer too, in terms of taking the facade down, and then even reconstructing the facade, because it looks like parts of it had been cracked. So that's already in the works. And when we toured, Tim and I had toured it with the contractor to look at the site, we did, that was the first time we really realized how big the tree was. We did talk about the option of if we did tear down the theater part, how that would work around the tree, if we didn't need to take any of it out. There is one tree in the back, though, I don't think you can see it from this picture, that would have to come out for tearing down the 3717.
Sure.
But yeah, the.
Sadly, the big tree you see in the middle of the two buildings, it's right in the middle of the site.
Yep.
So when these buildings are down, I can't contemplate if it's a unified, if it's one development on both parcels, there's no way the tree can be there.
I understand, but I mean.
It would be very creative.
Unless they sold a courtyard. There was some consideration of like a courtyard, like a, what if it was a restaurant that had an outdoor space? It would take a long time to get shade back to that growth, but I get, I hear what you're saying. Just put it out there.
The one in the parkways, I think, is already gone. So I want to, I want to stress that, I know it's, for most of the parkway trees on Grand, they weren't much to begin with.
Right.
We've taken them all down, and we are going to be replacing more trees as part of the project out there than what has ever been out there before. And so the net impact, at the end of the summer, end of this project, the net impact to the community of trees, at least on the parkway, will be greater. In terms of the big one you see in the middle there, just to the north of the theater building, I, again, unless, yeah, it's real, unless we're really creative with a, if they were to build around that tree, it's gonna greatly reduce the size of whatever they can build, because it's right, it's like right halfway between the front and the back.
Sure.
So it's not even like in the front, or it's not even towards the back, it's right in the middle.
It also might be a tree of heaven, I can't tell from this picture, which is invasive and we wouldn't want anyways, but.
That's what it is.
It would, totally.
If I could jump in, though, I completely agree with the idea of just leaving the tree there, because we don't technically know what it is from here. And it is providing shade, and if having to take down one single tree is going to keep a developer from developing that property, that's not a developer that we want. It's just a tree, they can take it down. I'd rather keep it, and I completely agree. You asked both of my questions about salvage as well. I would, I would be for trying to do some kind of architectural salvage if we can.
You said that they're gonna try to keep the sign, though, right, either way? Okay.
What would be the intent of covering the cost of the demolition? I mean, between the purchased property and the demolition, we will have a lot of village funds into this. I mean, going forward, I mean, that's part of our negotiations with the developer, I would think. But it's, I mean, I certainly don't think it should be that the village is eating the cost to make it, you know, shovel-ready for a developer.
I mean, I assume that would be part of any redevelopment agreement, part of the negotiations for how much we have into it and what.
Correct.
Incentives or things they might be asking for that's part of our stake.
That would be part of it.
And they're like similar to other projects that we've done where we've acquired or demolished or done that, that's part of the negotiation, I assume.
Right, it's just preparing the site and having it shovel-ready, not necessarily that we're absorbing the cost for it.
Would this happen after May 30th, like after the deadline of the RFP, and then we're taking them?
It would, because, because there's one tenant that's left that needs to vacate, so, and then by the time we do the asbestos and the Cook County and the environmental, we're really looking at probably July, maybe August, and that's the timeline that I spoke to with Dan about coordinating that.
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't be until later.
So we would potentially know possibly what development we were going with by that point anyways also, and could coordinate that effort with them?
We could coordinate, right, and tie that into whatever other services need to be incorporated in there.
And, but not to cloud it, I mean, Libby did indicate, and it would be up to the board to consider if we want to extend the RFP timeline, if, you know, we felt that it would be beneficial to receive more, more offers, more type of things, but, I mean, you bring up a good point, but I guess what staff's looking for tonight is the authority to, for permission to solicit bids for demolition services, so let's talk about that. I'm just trying to build a consensus on, you know, soliciting the bids, what would be involved in the bids. Obviously, it's the demolition of the two properties, but is the salvage option something that we can put in the bid and then compare the two prices in terms of, but is it clear what we're trying to salvage, or what would be, you know?
I mean, there's, what I'm suggesting is that there's some different types of companies that do deconstruction, like as a workforce development training, where they like actually come and take the building apart instead of like knocking it down. That's gonna be a very different bid, or what it would look like. And I could suggest, and I know that just through my work, some of the companies that do that kind of thing, if that's of interest to the board, I can share some of that language with Libby. But I think you could also put in a bid to anyone that, you know, wanted certain pieces salvaged. But I think there's a big difference between salvaging like that concrete sign and trying to salvage all of the brick for a future use.
How does the board feel as that being a priority in terms of, I mean, if Trustee Kalusek or anyone else says leads can provide some language where we at least solicit bids and that nature, and the board's free to choose which, you know, which is the most responsible way to go forward with that? Okay. So we, I mean, basically, here, let me, maybe I jumped a step here, is everyone in favor of soliciting, giving staff permission to solicit bids for the demolition? We've come to the realization that we're not going to be able to use the theater building as it was and the other building?
Yes.
Yes, I've been inside, I agree.
Okay. So there is the consensus to solicit bids, and then to add the, you know, maybe the parameters as a bid alternate for demolition services where we can kind of.
For the deconstruction?
Deconstruction, or, you know, salvage of some of the materials, that type of thing, you know, put it out to bid that way as a bid alternate even, or something like that. And then getting to the discussion on the trees, is there, I mean, is that, you know, I think it's sort of indicated that maybe we can wait, we're not, since we're not going to be taking down the trees right now, that maybe as we get closer, we could see, but I mean, just so I'm clear, how many trees are we, we're talking about the tree between the two properties, and there's one in the back?
They're like evergreens in the back.
Okay. Those clearly need to come down, but is this the tree between the two, the one that we're most concerned?
The one we can see.
The one we can see, okay. I mean, we're not taking it down yet, let's consider it an option, but we'll see if there's some way to avoid that going forward. Is that consensus of the board?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, a question would be, you said deconstruction might not hap, or demolition might not happen until like August. We would want to keep that us, different from, you know, we're gonna grand opening of the rework of Grand, at the same time, we're demoing.
And the concert.
So the whole concept, just the timing of it, just to keep that in consideration.
Right, we are.
You want to have a demolition party in concert?
Yeah, exactly. Well, you could, depends on the music, right?
We could all deconstruct it.
Yeah. But then, in regards to Trustee Kalusek's idea of the deconstruction and the bricks, on the side, no, I'm not saying that this is a funding opportunity or anything like that, but many residents would buy those bricks. If you sell them to the public, you know, if you did deconstruction, you sold brick by brick, many residents would do it. And then, of course, the main sign for the Brookfield Theater, I would go to the Historical Society, but the rest of it, people would buy those and put them in their own yards.
All right, so there's some, is that enough direction from the board? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did any other, any other comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you for bringing it forward. We'll see what comes in with the bids. Trustee Kalusek, you'll work with you, or if anyone else has any other contacts that they'd like to put out there, we'll, we'll bring this back before we award the, we have to actually bring it back to award the bid, so. All right, thank you, Libby. Okay, the next item is discussion of public signage for village-owned public parking lots on 31st, Maple and Prairie. Deanne provided a memo for us about, we've put in a very nice parking lot at 31st and Park, and the 3840 Maple by the, by the water tower, and 3826 Prairie just past Irish Times, we're trying to, as we've tried to just kind of make sure that we're consistent in all our signage throughout town, there's a recommendation here about some signage that we could do with the parking lots going forward. So, again, we have detailed memo from Deanne, but Deanne, if you want to kind of summarize maybe for the audience?
Good evening. So, community development has been tasked with public signage in these needed areas just for visibility, for people to navigate, and we entertained road-safe systems to give us some renderings using some of the current wayfinding signage in the village. And so, again, we feel there's a clear need for it to identify those three locations. There would be two signs, what, the proposal is two signs, one at the street side, one inside the interior. We would coordinate the installation of these signs with the Public Works Department. And then, obviously, the benefits would be to improve wayfinding, support local businesses, and encourage better use of our existing parking resources. The staff is recommending the very first set, one with an arrow, which would obviously go on the street, and we could do both sides of the street, and then the interior would have just the public parking. The other set is an alternate, alternate color scheme, and then this just shows the three different areas where we would put those signs. So we just need your direction on if we can move forward with the purchase of the signs.
So where is 3826 Prairie?
3826 Prairie is, it's on.
That's not the right address.
Oh, um, north.
And it's only, it's only half of that.
Right, it's just that, next to the building.
Between Jehovah's Witnesses.
Yes.
And the funeral home.
Right, on the.
It's not next to the building, it's the other side, correct?
It's in the middle, yeah.
Our parking is the parking that's the south, it's where, you see cars parked right now, right?
Right.
Right, not next to the building.
Right.
So if we do the signage there, I mean, if you're doing something off the street, that's not all our parking lot.
Is there a sign out there now?
There is a sign in the interior.
There is no, the, the goal of these signs is to, nobody knows, I worked here for years, and I didn't even know we owned that, what we're talking about.
I just learned it in the board back in.
There is, there is no, if you're on Prairie, there is no indication that that's public parking. Once you're in the parking lot, there are some signs, very small ones, on, on posts, but you don't see that on Prairie. So the goal of, if you can go back to the, the goal of these signs is to have a larger sign that we would put on the, on the street to direct, and on this one, on Prairie, with the arrow pointing to the right, so you're coming either north or south on Prairie, you can turn into that area knowing it's a public parking lot. We will confirm and ensure that the sign is posted on a appropriately public area.
But you see, that's gonna be a tricky part, directing people into that lot, when only half the lot is ours.
I wonder if you're, if, because it's on that south side, if you have then multiple signs in there, or signs with arrows showing you the spots this way and the spots this way are public parking?
I believe, aren't, aren't there both directions, village, the village parking lots, so it's not just the one, you're right, not against the building, but the cars you see there and the other cars that would be facing them, I believe, are part of the village-owned parking lot?
On the other side, no, that's the funeral.
If you did it this side only.
It's only one, only one aisle of parking?
Make sure they understand, it's just that one.
There's two aisles of parking, but the one side, I believe, belongs to.
The funeral home. So the ones right up against the brown building are the Jehovah Witnesses parking lot, then that those, where cars are parked right now, I believe, we'll have to obviously confirm this, but, I mean, to, Trustee Hendricks, to your point, I mean, we, we do own those spaces, we want to direct people there, so we do have to come up with some type of signage, so it's just clarifying it the right way, where, showing people from Prairie that there is, and then once we get in there, you know, maybe it takes an extra sign, maybe there's, you know, two of these signs with the arrows on each side of that, you know, between those spaces, so it's clear.
Yeah.
Yep. Each side that, you know, these are the public, because we know that people park there now, I don't know how much is enforced, and what the, what the time regulations, and that's something I was gonna bring up, not to cloud things, but we'll get to that about the time restrictions and what hours people are allowed to park and that type of thing. But for now, the discussion is about general public parking signs, so.
Is that public parking, or was that permit parking?
It's public. It's public.
It's not permit.
I'm thinking back to the post office getting permits to park there.
I'd never heard that one before. I didn't know the post office had.
But that it, it's totally public parking, it's not permitted parking.
It's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, well, here, let's confirm, because I think what Trustee Ketchmark is referring to now, I think about it, when the large development, the six-story and Brookfield Avenue was built there, there was, you know, the public, there was post office trucks parked there, and some of them actually park in the first floor of that building, but then there was some talk about employees from the post office being able to park, but I just thought that they were generally allowed to park there like any other Brookfield resident, so just let's do the research, make sure there's no dedicated timeframe where there's restricted parking in there, so we're not making it, I know some, some of those, those spots are often available during the day and in the evening, so let's figure out what actual spaces in that lot are ours and are free to be used for public parking, but we know some of them are public parking, so in general, are we in favor of the signs? And then we'll work on the placement.
Yes, I like the lighter colored signs.
Okay, so Trustee Gahuli likes the alternate color scheme as a, how does the rest of the?
I like that one as well.
Okay.
I prefer the blue, I think it's more universal.
I was just gonna say that the blue is kind of the universal public parking sign when you're.
Still has the blue in it, but yeah.
That's why staff liked the blue one, because it's more the international symbol, but we can go either way.
It'd be easier to see in the dark, too, the white uttering.
Okay, so this is, so, okay, again, everyone in favor of some signage?
Yes.
Let's go signage, that's fine.
All right. Trustee Gahuli said the, the alternate, Trustee Kotay?
Alternate.
Trustee Kalusek?
Blue.
Okay, two to one.
Blue.
Two to two?
Alternate.
Three to two?
Blue.
Ah, nice.
So I'm giving Clerk Weber a going-away present here.
I like the blue.
Whispering, okay.
Blue.
Blue it is.
I say blue.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward, but I, and again, not to cloud things, and this doesn't necessarily tie for tonight, because it's, can you go back to the, the pictures of the three lots, because just for the record, 9130, West 31st Street does not look like that any longer. It's a beautiful, beautiful parking lot. But where are we, have we talked about the time restrictions in terms of what that is and what that isn't, and how, because I'm especially concerned with the 31st Street lot, because there's apartments on 31st Street just west of the ice cream shop that I just, I think we made this clear, that's not to become overnight parking for their tenants and things like this.
To answer your question, we have not, we'd have to come forward with an ordinance, first of all, and we haven't, we thought we'd let it be open and kind of observe how it's being used. My impression is it's not being used all that often, I mean, that every time I'm by there, there's only one or two cars there, but what we were thinking of is the typical kind of two-hour parking type of restriction.
But is there any restriction, overnight parking? I mean, I, again, I walk the dogs by there sometimes 5:30, quarter to 6:00 in the morning, and there's cars parked in there, and I don't recognize the cars, so I don't know if they're tenants from the apartment buildings, because there's limited parking for those apartment buildings down, and I just, absolutely, there's no enforcement mechanism right now, but I just want to make it clear, it wasn't our intention to have it as.
Correct.
Overnight parking.
Our goal was really, and I'm remembering the discussion for the building just to the east, you know, that wanted to be a retail establishment on the first floor, and then the people in the park, our goal with this parking lot, and there's a reminder, it was on property that was donated to the village, we paid for the development of the parking lot, the idea was for shopping and for commercial parking, so that kind of throws in the two-hour parking is what we were looking at.
Okay. And then, and again, those, I'm not suggesting that the hours should be on these signs, but eventually there might have to be some kind of.
Internal.
You know, no overnight parking, and then, you know, a couple two-hour parking signs within the lot, stuff like this.
Right, yeah, these signs, today, these are what we're, we would put on the street right away, and then once we get into the parking lot, we'll have the traditional regulations and so forth.
Okay, and, you know, as, while you're doing that, I guess, just make sure, like, what regulations we have in place for 3826 Prairie, that it's clear that it's no, because we can maybe can clean all those things up at once, that it's no overnight parking, it's, it's not all-day parking, if we want to put those at two hours, and, I mean, obviously the 3840 Maple is, the intention is that it's for, you know, our Parks and Rec program, so is there different restrictions that would want to be there? So maybe we clean, clean all that up when we, if you bring forward 9100 West 31st Street, we also clean up the other spots so we can regulate.
To the 3840 Maple, maybe to the police department, were there any issues with the roofing company parking in there that's right next to that? The employee parking?
No, most times, they're, they have separate parking stalls in their lot.
Okay.
I've never seen their employees park in there. Sometimes they'll pull their trucks out, and their employees will park their, their trucks.
Okay. Thanks.
I just have one, if you're thinking about timing on those, those spots, there, one of the tenants right there is a hair salon, and I know some people get really fancy hair, where you're there getting it dyed for hours and hours at a time, so I would just check in with them on the time limit so that their patrons still park there.
We'll find out how, how long...
How long fancy hair takes, right.
And I gotta say, I've seen it, I, I've talked to a few of the business owners, it has helped, they're very appreciative of it, and I haven't necessarily seen any abuse. The, the stuff, the cars there overnight early in the morning, isn't become a major problem, but I don't want it to be, but, I mean, the ice cream business is gonna do really well there with people able to, and I, Public Works was able to get a Groot garbage can out there now, I think a Village, like, matching garbage can is put out there, and I think I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned it to Deanne or Libby, I don't know if you actually talked to the business owners, they've done a great job. My, my concern was, you know, Public Works went out of their way to put up a garbage can on the corner of 31st and Park, because people would go to the ice cream store and sit in the parking lot and eat ice cream, and then there was nowhere, there's a garbage can in front of the ice cream store, but that apparently was too far, so people would just leave it in the parking lot, but, so we put an extra garbage can out there, but there was still stuffed debris in the middle of the parking lot, you know, that 50 feet away from the garbage can, but the business owners have been making a sweep at night, and I gotta tell you, it's looked really good, they pick up any excess garbage, I don't know how more convenient, we can make it by putting garbage cans right there, but it does look really good, so, thanks to the business owners for that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Deanne.
I want fancy hair.
You can have fancy hair. It's possible.
Okay, on that note, we'll move on to our last item, discussion regarding parking ordinance revisions to conform with change infrastructure. The police department has spent a great deal of time looking at some, and sometimes these are generated by complaints or concerns or ticket issues, but they've looked at some spots and they have some recommendations about some changes in the parking ordinance that might have made sense at the time we passed them, but are no longer needed in the police department's eyes, so we have a very good memo again, and we have our deputy chief Mahalik here to make a presentation, so the floor is yours.
I think the first question is, do you like blue or do you like...
You know, I think they, I did choose blue, I did.
Good, good answer.
I'm partially, you know, no, thank you, President Garvey and Village Board, and I'm gonna use a quote from you, President Garvey, this project is an attempt to just clean up things. You know, when you look at parking ordinances, they can be impactful to the community, to residents and the businesses, and what we're trying to do is just identify some of those areas in town that either with all the construction in the community, fix it up and/or change ordinances that are archaic because of the landscape changes. On my, just a couple areas that I identified, first being 8900 Block and 9,000 Blocks of Burlington, currently, there are no ordinances that govern that block. We have recently done construction updates and the street was widened, so I'd be looking to have some recommendations to adopt an ordinance that we currently have on the, on the, on the adjacent blocks in that area, we have what's called B Resident Parking, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it would be a small lift just to add those areas.
And are we just talking, we're talking just about the south side, right, of Burlington there, because our packet has references just the south side of Burlington at that point, right?
Yes, if you take a look at the, the slides above, the two pictures are what it currently looks like, and the bottom picture is what it previously looked like from an old Google Maps, we had no parking there previously, it was zoned for no parking only, and right now, what we have now is it's free rein for people to park. On the north side, you have the commuter parking, so realistically, if a commuter wanted to park in those new spaces without paying for a commuter pass, they can do so.
Okay. So those would be, we'd have, you'd have to have B Resident plate or sticker and then be able to park, so there, those blocks nearby have overflow where they could probably use these spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Second location is the 9,000 Block of Lincoln, that's the new location of the library. I showed two pictures up there, one on the left is what it used to look like, and the one on the right is the new location. There used to be a church on the northeast corner of Park and Lincoln, the current ordinance reads Sunday, like, church parking, two-hour parking, it's really, there's no sign there right now that reflects that, we don't enforce it that way, and in fact, the new parking, angled parking on the library side, which is the north side of Lincoln, is actually just a, a drop-off box where the ordinance applies, so we'd be looking to amend that ordinance.
So remove the church parking ordinance and just add the standard no 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM?
Correct, on the south end of the block where you see the yellow or the red stripes, I got a little laser pointer if it, if it helps, currently, all right, that doesn't help. Currently, right here, we have signage that shows no parking 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Okay.
This is the new angled parking, so we'd want to mirror that, it doesn't require an adoption of an ordinance, just being consistent with the area, we would post signage.
Okay.
I did talk to the library director, who was in agreement with that, to mirror what it used to be in the past before all the construction.
Okay.
Third, we have Ogden Avenue, there's two streets, the 4,000 Block of Deo and the 4,000 Block of Raymond that have no ordinance related to it, there is some signage posted for two-hour parking, however, there's no ordinance attached to it, so I think at some point in time to try to regulate the parking there, signage was placed, however, there's no ordinance to support it, so we'd be looking to, I think before, on Raymond, we never had angled parking, I don't have a photograph on that, of this area, but we never had angled parking, and now when they put in the advanced auto parts, they added the angled parking.
Okay.
And we have, there's a couple businesses there end up having some overflow parking, so we'd be looking to add that to the ordinance for time zone, two-hour parking, if you go along Ogden Avenue, a lot of the adjacent streets along Ogden Avenue are two-hour parking, if not, no parking at all.
So that doesn't necessarily require anywhere, just adding these two locations to the existing ordinance on the other blocks?
Correct.
Okay.
4100 Block of DuBois, this one came with a complaint from a resident, and while doing the review of all the parking, there's two conflicting ordinances, one is the, is the B ordinance parking, 7:00 to 9:00 AM on that block on the west side of the street, and also there's an ordinance that specifies no parking on the west side of the street.
And what was the, you know what the logic was behind those restrictions of that location?
You know, I have no idea, when speaking to the resident who's been there for like 30 years, he said the previous resident that lived where the sign is, if you look at the arrow, there's that sign there, you could barely see it, but it says no parking any time.
Okay. I just can't think of why those...
It says no parking any time, and then this blue sign is the B parking, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, I guess there was a previous elderly resident that had a difficult time pulling out of a driveway because the two drivers were very close together, in my explanation to him, back in the day, there used to be an ordinance where you couldn't park within five feet of a driveway, that's since been repealed, we can't really enforce that anyways.
Because the state statute doesn't allow that, is my, right, I remember that?
Correct.
Okay.
What the residents are doing now is they still park in that area marked orange, you know, nobody on the block was treating it as a no parking area anyways, so when I say like some of the changes that we're looking for are the ones that have no impact, if any, to the residents also.
Okay.
And then finally was Custer and 45th Place, this used to be, when I started, no stop signs, recently, Lions Police Department, or the Village Alliance, placed a stop sign going north on Custer, we've communicated with the Village Alliance on how we follow the manual, traffic control, traffic control device manual, and we did a traffic study, at least with the records that we had from Brookfield, and how it didn't meet the requirement for a stop sign, however, they said they received complaints from residents and that they were gonna maintain a stop sign there, which made it a, a challenge for people traveling south without a stop sign and a hazard, the Traffic Safety Committee reviewed all the information, and their recommendation is to put a stop sign there, so this would be in addition to an existing ordinance that we already have, and a placement of a stop sign.
Okay. All right, questions, comments from the board?
One thing, you know, chief, we had talked about the 4,000 Block of DuBois on the east side by the currency exchange.
Correct.
Have you looked at that anymore?
I did.
That might just be the wrong signs.
It is, I pulled what the previous signage was, it's actually 15-minute zone parking, and then it was no parking from where the sign currently is, south to Ogden, so we're working on updating that.
Yeah, because we still have the no parking any time with the arrows going to the signs, which...
Yeah. No. And it's little things like that, that, you know, sometimes there may be an accident, a sign get knocked down, a sign may not get replaced.
Well, we did, I think after we did the construction, their signs went up and they weren't the right sign.
Yeah, you are, you are correct.
Any other board members have questions or comments related to any of these recommendations? There's, there's five of them, any concerns about any of the recommendations?
No, thank you for finding the issues, and I agree, that stop sign addition will make it less confusing for everybody, I'm sure.
And safer.
Yeah, yeah.
So some of these are gonna require board action to clean up the ordinances, and some, I, I guess I'm trying to look at them to see if there's some are just...
No, and stay tuned, yeah, yeah, I think there will have to be some ordinances coming back, and there's going to be a lot more, these are the more significant ones.
Sure, and that's...
Police Department is doing a very thorough, now, there's a lot of areas throughout the village, like some, some smaller, like 50 feet here, 100 feet there, that over the years, just as deputy chief said, there's, things have changed and the regulations have changed, we're gonna come to you with a lot of ordinance, I think, changes that'll, that'll correlate what is out there right now and what the ordinance is to back it up to make sure those match, because there's a lot of areas where they don't.
But we, we could take action as we go along, right, also take action on these five, if we get the ordinances that are necessary for the next board meeting, and then, you know, keep bringing them forward, and I'd like to committee them all, just so everyone agrees with them, but, okay?
Hey, can I ask a quick question about Energize Ogden and parking along the 4100 blocks along, on the south side of Ogden, are there efforts to look at, at those blocks? Because I know that there's, there's a lot of parking that happens on those blocks from the businesses on Ogden.
Along Ogden on the south end, with the exception of Prairie and Oak, Maple and Blanchin, those are all, where there's angled parking, there's two-hour zone parking there.
Right, but then beyond, we get a lot of parking for, like, Galloping Ghost and Skirly and I was just wondering, I know that's probably part of the Energize Ogden plan upcoming, but I was just wondering, is that something that is going to be included in the future?
We haven't looked at that, one block, 4100 Block of Madison, I give an example, the residence petition for a resident-only parking, really, at this time, that's, if something is excessive, I think that's the avenue that they can go.
Okay.
Just to add to what, just so that there's resident consensus on that type of change, because it would change the, the way that people can park on that block, then if you're having guests or otherwise, we've had other blocks where there've been issues where those residents, I don't think they necessarily, some didn't support it, the overwhelming majority, and then, you know, before we had the call-ins, every time that they'd have a guest come in, and there's, there's been express frustration, and so we created that administrative policy to have, if, if, I believe it's over two-thirds of the block wants a change to that, that type of a residential change, bring it by petition, that way we can ensure that it's in the best interest of the majority of people in the block.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? All right, thank you for bringing it forward, thanks for all the work, I know it's somewhat tedious work, but thank you, and we'll look for more recommendations coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, that ends the items we had up for discussion under regular business, we do, we are gonna need an executive session, before we go into executive session, I'll open it up to public comment, is there any public comment on my right side? Any public comment on my left side? Okay, hearing no public comment, at 7:48 PM, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss purchase or lease of real property for the village's use.
So moved?
Second.
The motion to go into executive session was made by trustee Kotay, second by trustee Kaluzny, roll call please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Nirmat Su?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned to executive session at 7:49, the executive session will be...